For joining us today for the Board of Trustees meeting on February 28. If we could start with a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So first, we'll start with public comment. You can come on up to the podium. Give us your name in about three minutes.
I reside at 1550 Georgetown Drive. I'm a precinct delegate in Bloomfield Township. My public comment is related to item seven, the consolidation of the healthcare benefit Should be noted on the audit, most recent audit on page 38, the water and sewer fund reserves include the additional liabilities related to the pension trust fund and/or overpayments for not only that, but also the retiree healthcare fund. And they directly impact our fund reserves. So it seems those belongs to the water and sewer fund and should not be consolidated, especially with the amount of revenue that the township garnered in fees, which were validated based on those balances. Should also be noted that the building inspection are also collected based on fees and not on property taxes. So when you consolidate those funds, those two funds are over 100% fully funded. They should not go to pay any expenses related to the general fund. They should not go to pay anything related to public safety, which are underfunded. It's actually very distressing that you guys are considering this. In addition, since they are properly funded, why should they have the same policy? Public safety and the town portion of the fund, they need growth. And you guys have tied those funds up and claimed that they were underfunded, those subaccounts, when you represent to the state of Michigan because you consolidated those assets. I've also verified that with the McNair Center. It should also be noted that additional transfers were made prior to the approval of the state's corrective action plan from both water and sewer building inspection and cable studio. Those were designed to increase those funds dramatically. And it appears that water and sewer was funding approximately 1.4 million more than what would normally be required by the state of Michigan. Or, as a matter of fact, the building inspection fee, they didn't have to pay more than the benefit payments that were required over several years. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public? Come on up.
Hi, my name is Lisa Anton. My husband Sal and I reside at 5621 Meadowhead Lane in Bloomfield Township. We've lived in the township for over 10 years and we love living in our area. We pay our taxes on time, all the time. And when I receive the tax bill for this payment that was recently due, I always enter it in my bank account and always make sure it's in at least two days prior to when it's due. I have proof that my, we received a late fee for about almost $500. And I checked with my bank, Chase Bank, I talked to the representative there across the street at Long Lake and Telegraph that we work with. And it was taken out on the 9th of February. And I have, if the funds were taken out, almost $15,000 were taken out. So we did not have access to those funds. I did talk to Mary, the deputy treasurer. She had explained that, you know, sometimes this happens. And my husband and I just, you know, we're upstanding citizens in the township and, you know, we did pay it, obviously. I just want to make sure that, you know, I just think it's like, I know you guys don't take postmarks and I don't have any control over that, but I do know that, you know, it was taken out of our account. And if you can show me proof that you guys didn't get it on time, that's one thing, but I have proof that showed that it was taken out of the account. So if you would consider, please, waiving it, we would greatly appreciate it.
Anyone else from the public to speak? Okay, I'll close all comments. Do you want to address?
Yeah, let me address that last public comment. So for the members of the board, winter taxes are due February 14th in our office. Anything that is paid to us between February 15th and February 28th normally, this year the 29th, last day of the month. We, as a board, have had a policy, longstanding policy of charging a 3% penalty, which is stated in MCL, sorry, I brought the copy, 211.44. If taxes are not paid to us in February, starting March 1st, we no longer can collect them legally. It goes to the county and the county's taxed out a 4% penalty and 18% interest. And they, they collect it from, for any delinquencies that are beyond February 29th. So, MCL, the same, the same law, 211.44, subsection four, says that the governing body of a local property tax collecting unit may waive all or part of the property tax administration fee or the late penalty charge. So we are empowered by law to waive that 3% penalty. And it's again, a penalty that we, as a board, have had a policy by resolution for many, many years that exceeds everybody who's on the dais tonight. And so basically, at this time, you know, what my office has done is for people who got charged this 3% penalty, we advise them of the statute that says that it's available for us to charge and also that they can come to the board at our board meeting and request consideration of a waiver. So at this point, what would happen is if any member of this board wanted to discuss that and consider that, they could make a motion to amend the agenda, add an agenda item for consideration of a waiver on the penalty. I will also add that in the eight years or seven years that I've been on the board, we have never issued a waiver. And if Neil were here, he would say that in the last 20 years, we've never issued a waiver.
Is that because they're technically due in December and we get that 60-day grace period through till February?
Yeah, so the taxes are payable starting December 1st. And then you get 10 weeks going through February 14th to pay the taxes with no penalty or interest.
So I understand, you know, why we have that policy and I agree with it, but assuming that the township did receive it prior to February 14th, then I'm certainly in favor of waiving any late fee that was assessed.
Yeah, well, I mean, I can promise you that it was not received in this office by the 14th.
Okay, so that, that was my, gonna be my same question was, you know, as the treasurer, I do the electronic payment, been doing it for years because it's reliable. And I've never had a problem with it. Have we ever had this problem before? Because if in fact, the bank processed that on the 9th, why did we not get it until way later? That seems, it doesn't make sense.
Because it was mailed.
Yeah, that, yeah.
It comes through the US Postal Service.
You're talking about electronic payments, which is different.
You're talking about an electronic payment directly to the township. The money's pulled out of your bank.
Right.
It goes into our bank.
And what?
And for anybody who, anyone who paid through midnight on February 14th using that system, that was counted as on time. The specific case here for the Antons is that they entered a bill pay through Chase, I think it was Chase, right? And it left their account, which is what Chase does, and then they hold it for a couple of days to earn some money on the float, and then they mail a check. And that check was not received in the office by the 14th through the US mail.
Okay.
And so our, our policy, again, as long as I've been on the board and probably much longer, is we don't accept postmarks. The money has to be in our account or collected by the office on the, at the close of business on the 14th.
Yeah, I, I feel the pain. I mean, I've run into the situation before using that online check process. They, they give you predictions to when it'll be there, but no guarantee. And, you know, it sometimes doesn't get there when they say it will. And, you know, the results, I've, you know, had to pay a late fee, to Visa, whoever. So it happens.
Yeah, it is an unfortunate circumstance. And we, we have many people who called and said, I mailed the check on the 8th. Why didn't, why am I hit with a penalty? Because we didn't get it till the 16th, because that's the US Postal Service.
Tell me about it.
And I'm sure, speaking to the one who collects all the ballots.
Oh, yeah.
You know, the mail service is just unfortunately really unreliable. And, you know, but we do offer like the payment through ACH. We have a credit card payment service. Of course, we're open all day through the 14th, close of business to collect it in, you know, in cash or check. And as supervisor pointed out, it's payable December 1st through February 14th.
The reason I know this is because I had to pay a fee on my taxes because I used the payment system you're talking about. Used to be, there was even a three-day lag on that, the first year we implemented it. And I didn't know that. I'd never experienced that before. Paid it the day before. They didn't get it till two days later.
Yeah.
So I had to pay a fee too because I could have technically paid it because I tried the same thing to say, hey, it was a mistake. And then I was told by the treasurer at the time, you actually had 10 weeks to pay it. So it was hard to swallow that, but I did learn that lesson. And now I pay mine in advance, about a week in advance. Today, this time, it wasn't.
That's very unfortunate. Usually I think the bank will tell you that they have to mail that check. But so can I clarify? So I do mine at the township website. I've not had a problem.
That's the one I did.
I've not had a problem.
Right.
But my water bill, I do use Bank of America online bill pay and they will say, deliver by.
I'm sure if you look in the.
Do you ever, I've got to ask you, do you ever get my water bill later than I planned?
You might if it's going through the mail.
Valerie, I'm surprised that it says that because postal service around the country has gotten so unreliable. I don't know how they can promise you that this can be received by a certain time.
It took me three weeks to get something from the library. They're a mile away.
But they're still mailing it. See, I, I.
Yes, these are, these are checks that are mailed.
I believed that when I used that bill pay for the water bill, that, that it was not having to be a mailed check.
No. It's mailed check.
Yeah, I mean, this is like a very unique way to pay. And I don't know. I mean, I don't know how often this happens, but frankly, Chase debited the money, if that's, you know, Chase's policy. I guess I'll just keep it short. I'm in favor of refunding this late fee.
The one thing is if we do one, we do all.
Well, but here's the thing.
That's always been the discussion, especially because.
But this is, but this is very unique because even to trustee Murray's point, there are so many different ways to pay. And this type of a bill pay is unique in that you are not writing a check yourself and you're asking your bank to essentially mail the check for you. But the bank took the money on February 9th and I'm not sure, and, you know, different banks, they have different policies. They're going to debit it at different times, they're going to mail it at different times. But I just, it just doesn't seem fair.
So it is, I know, I used to use bill pay to avoid the 3% fee or whatever. You get charged when you use your, the online pay. Like I pay when I pay that way. I used to use that bill pay until I also started getting checks that weren't delivered on time. And now I do, I do pay the fee if I can't get a check in on other things. So you're right, it's not used often because it's just not reliable anymore.
Right.
Which is why we ended up coming up with, I think that wasn't until '21 that we came up with online bill pay because we never offered it before. And it was because there were a couple of situations like this where like, well, we need to offer something. So if somebody's in Florida, they can still pay their bill. If, if someone chooses not to do that to avoid a 3% fee and then their, their thing comes in late, they end up paying basically the same 3% fee that they would have with the other. But we brought that in so it did make it really easy. It doesn't matter where you are in the US, or I don't even know if it's outside the US, but you can pay your bill online.
Yeah.
And that's, I think we just started that in '21.
I mean, I'll defer to the collective wisdom of this board, but I didn't, I am not empowered as the treasurer to waive this. It needs to come, it needs to be in action of the Board of Trustees. You know, to the supervisor's point, I think, once you start going down this road, it's a slippery slope to.
I would say you have to do all of them.
Yeah, I mean.
You can't do one and not all the others that asked.
Right, so.
But we have one person here asking now, so.
But that isn't how many called Michael. What I'm saying is I personally wouldn't just give it to the one that's here. I'm saying there are other people call Michael all day from February 16th, you know, that, that they all have the same problem. So I would want, if we give the grace to one person, why wouldn't we give it to everybody that was affected? That's what I'm saying is, if we do go that way, I'm saying you go all that way.
So I honestly feel your pain. It's not like this is, you know, 50 bucks or 100 bucks, like $500 for my bank not being a good steward or a good, again, not being a good partner with you, right? Like you have money with them, like this is a big deal. And they, they took their part, right? But at the same token, it is my responsibility here, is we have to pay our bills on time or we are assessed a fee. So I don't think you can address the board, I don't think she can address me, right?
No.
Sorry, I miss, I apologize. So to do this, not just for you, for anybody who postmarks and has a bill paid prior to the time, at the end of the day, we have a due date. So I know I paid mine on the day of, but you come in here, the office is busy, we have people available. So it is our responsibility to pay our bills on time. And whether we have a good person doing it, our bank, the mail, it has to be done. So I feel your pain that it's $500 or 3%, but it is the responsibility to pay that by that date or you pay the fee. So I am not in favor of doing that, whether it's for these people. And again, I'd be calling my bank and I'd be asking for a refund and that would be, and I would. So it was sent, but if it wasn't received by us, and I believe in this case it was received after either the 15th or 16th, the township, if we don't have it in hand, we can't deposit it. So it's out of our hands.
How do I know that? Just hearsay.
So maybe tomorrow, can you send the date that it was received so we can do that? Because one thing I'll say is, I personally, like I said, have paid the late fee on my own taxes. He's right. But I've paid the late fee and I personally didn't ask for it because I knew it was, I did it wrong. I did it wrong. This is a mistake on the bank, but that's also a choice to go that route instead of the online pay, which was all the way up till midnight. Again, there's so many different ways to pay. Chase did hold on to it, sent it through the US mail, which is one of the most unreliable ways that you can do it. But that's a Chase problem and, and that's.
And it's not just a Chase problem. If you go to Bank of America, you go to any credit union that uses the check pay system, it's going to be the same thing. They will. But I know my family has done it where I haven't gotten one for two or three weeks when we pay certain vendors for our company. So I don't do that anymore because I don't want to have that unreliability because I have due dates for my stuff or I pay 2% and 3% penalties for my contractors, subcontractors for my business. So I don't do that because I can't rely on the bank and I have made an agreement with people. So in this case, taxpayers made an agreement with us, the tax body, and we are required to. So again, and you guys aren't the only case that this happens to. There are plenty of people who have checks postmarked prior to February 9th that are having similar issues. And I feel for you. I just can't support that.
Well, the same, I mean, the same issue is going to arise next week, or actually tomorrow, because tomorrow's the last day of the month. Starting Friday, anything we don't have in hand has to be transferred to the county. And then the county will charge their 4% plus 18% interest. And again, it's, if we don't have it in hand by the 29th, that, our hands are tied. That's what the law says. And so, you know, if we actually do something that most municipalities don't, if we, if we haven't received a tax payment by the 14th, we mail a follow-up letter that says, you need to pay this before March 1st or you're going to get hit with big fees. Please come into the office and take care of this. And we send it out. I mean, how many, how many is it, 2,000? 1,000?
Can you come up, Mary, can you come up to the, to our deputy treasurer?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, we sent out about 1,200, about 1,200 notices.
There are 1,200 people that, that were potentially going to be late.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
There's 1,200 people who are late.
Potentially.
We didn't have it by the 14th.
Right, we didn't have them by the 14th.
The next day, on the 15th, we printed out all the.
Oh, so 1,200 are late, potentially more, even more late with 4% plus 18%.
Correct. So if those 1,200 people don't, if we do not receive their tax payments by tomorrow, close of business, starting Friday goes over to the Oakland County Treasurer's Office and it's their responsibility at that point to collect it. And they will charge a mandatory 4% penalty and 18% interest.
Can I just add one thing to the board? These, these, these checks, these online bill pay checks, when they come to us, there is no postmark on them. They are sent from the Chase Payment Bill Processing Center and they're actually folded and they're bulk mailed out. There is no stamp on there, there's no postmark at all. So we can't even tell, right? If we were to, if we were to use a postmark as an indication of when we received it, which some municipalities do, we, we don't. And it's specifically stated on our tax bills that postmarks are not accepted. I actually took a, picked a couple of pictures on my phone of what we get and it's, you can't tell. So even though it was.
You stamp them when you get them then, to show when it was received, if it's after the 14th?
No, we, no, we don't.
Well, they're deposited in the same day that we get them.
So anything that wasn't deposited.
Right.
Because I mean, everything that comes in the mail is scanned, is stamped by our mail machine, you know, of the time and data was received. I'm there doing it all the time because we do that for ballots. And so.
So even if it wasn't postmarked by the bank, we would have it stamped when we received it.
Who does that? Who in the mailroom stamps what we receive?
So it's not, it's, there's a machine. And you send it through the machine and it, it gives us our, our received date. I'm not, I don't know what the treasurer probably does, but.
So I know, I was going to say, that might be for, for your department for elections.
Yeah, so I don't know what, whether they're doing that in treasurer or not, but.
Yeah.
I don't know. I've never even heard of that option.
Yeah, so we have a machine there that does that.
But Mary, it's, it's still a physical check because I haven't seen that on my, my bill pay personally in a long time, but I did see, recall seeing sometimes where they say, for this vendor, a check will have to be mailed.
Yes.
And they tell you.
It's a physical check.
And so now I got to go home and figure out, because I do my water bill that way just because it's easier than going to the township website and it comes up more often. Do you, I'm going to have to check and see if they have to send you a check because otherwise I will do it the other way because that's crazy.
Yeah, yeah.
If you're initiating the transfer from your bank, it's a check.
Interesting, because I was not aware that that was, that was the case for that.
Yeah, if you, if you go through our website, then we initiate the transfer on our side and pull it from your bank account. And so it'll hit your account electronically. If you do it through your bank's payment website, it's, it's a check.
Otherwise, if you want it quickly, you pay a wire, wire transfer fee.
Right.
Again, there's always a fee. If you want it to go quickly, not through the mail, there's usually a fee. Whether your bank charges you a wire fee, whether the online bank pay charges you a 3%.
Right, and I'm never worried about doing it quick or last minute. I mean, last minute, you could walk up here unless you were out of town, but I always do it in advance and assume that if I pay it, you know, a few days in advance, I'm good. I'm.
It might not be.
Yeah, where I might not, I got to find out if my, my water bills have been shown at me. It's not like the same penalty because I always pay it early, but.
Right.
Interesting.
All right, so treasurer Shostak, on one of the questions that just came up. So because we don't actually have a postmark or some of these do not actually have a date on them, can you explain the process of what your staff does, not only up until February 14th, but the next day? So if theirs came in on February 15th with no postmark or no time, how do we know that we got it on February 15th?
Well, even if it had a postmark, we wouldn't know what, it couldn't tell you what day it was received because the mail is so unreliable as, as to when it comes. But every morning, we go to the post office and get the mail.
Okay.
Come in and then it's deposited within the first hour or two.
Okay.
And there's a scan of the deposit. We can provide that.
Okay, perfect.
That'll show when it was deposited. But, you know, we're not in the business, this is not a business. We're not here to make money. Like I wish everyone paid their taxes before February 14th so we'd be done, you know, and not have to chase after people. But the, the law provides a mechanism for charging a penalty as an incentive to pay it by the due date. And there is 10 full weeks to pay it. And so, you know, if this board decides or leads to decide of, well, we shouldn't be charging this penalty at all, we can do that next year. We can pass a resolution before the tax period, say, we're not going to charge a penalty this year. And at least that way, it's going to be uniformly applied. But doing one-off, you know, I mean, we, we have, we have a script after the 14th that says, you got charged a 3% penalty because that's where the law allows us to charge and the board has decided to do that. Only the board can waive that. If you're interested in coming to the board, you can come to the board. But in the past 20 years, the board has not been receptive to those kind of requests.
Well, I think, though, the one fear about getting rid of it completely is if you already have 1,200, that is way more than I ever would have thought. I would have thought like 100. That's almost 10%. So how much it wouldn't pay.
Well, we did have, we did have many residents that came to the counter to pay that said, I'm glad you sent this because I didn't get the original statement or whatever. So, and they, they, they did, they did pay the, the late. So they, they were of, they were of benefit to the residents so that, because if they wouldn't have received that and they didn't know they were, then they would have gone over to Oakland County as delinquent.
No, I appreciate that we send the letters and, you know, if this was like a, an issue where it was just something that fell through the cracks or for some reason didn't get posted on our books, but the bank did, did get it to you on time. But I'm concerned that with 1,200 that you, I'm glad you sent the letter because if it ever happened to me, I'd much rather get the 3% letter than the, the March 1st.
And everyone knows I'm relatively new. So I took this one very seriously, of course, because this is the first time. I was here on the 14th till 5:30. I watched them open the, the box and clear it. I checked the mail room, I checked every, I mean, we went to all the departments within the township to see if they had any mail for us.
Went to the post office twice.
Yes, and we went to the post office twice. So we cleared and we processed as much as we could, you know, to try to get it in. We don't want to have to put that penalty on there, but this is our process and we followed our process exactly like we have for many years, even though I'm a newbie. So.
Thank you for your due diligence and the double checking because that would be a shame if you said, oh, I meant to check one more time and now it might have been there yesterday.
Yeah.
Or it got accidentally routed to the DPW instead of.
Right, right. Thank you, Mary.
I didn't know you went to all the other mailboxes.
Right, so we checked, so we checked, we checked the township's official mailbox, the PO box.
Yeah.
Our staff is the one that goes and get it. Now, during the election season, it's the election staff that goes and checks the mail. They pull out all of the ballots. Since my staff has not cleared to have ballot access, they pull all the ballots out and then give us the rest. And then, and that's done every morning between 9:00 and 10:00 AM. On the day of the 14th, we did that, we followed that process. It was during the election season, so the election staff got it. But then we went back later in the afternoon to see if there were anything that the post office didn't give us in the morning. Like, so again, we exercised that additional diligence to make sure that we got everything that we possibly could. And like, like I said, 1,200 did not pay by the 14th. We, we sent them all letters on the 15th. Anybody that we had an email address for, we emailed them. And we have those email addresses from the water and sewer bills, people who sign up for electronic billing. If they didn't pay their taxes, we email them and say, hey, you didn't pay your taxes. You might want to do that before the end of the month. And then, you know, I mean, I think a very low number will be ultimately passed on to Oakland County. Yeah, but, but we've been, we've been busy the last few days processing all of the, the payments and, you know, we, we followed all the, all the procedures. So.
Does anyone want to make any motions or?
Yeah, there's, there's no support for it, so.
My, my, I wouldn't support it if you said all. I'm saying if we do for one, we do for all, but then that would be.
Yeah.
All, I mean. All 1,200 were late.
Yeah, 1,200, but I know, but, but it's, it's, I would be shocked if all 1,200 had paid in the exact same way that the Anton's had paid. And I, I can distinguish them from other people mailing it. But, I mean, the fact of the matter is, I fully support the 3% and we have to, I believe we have to charge that. Because to Treasurer Shostak's point, we're not making money. We have bills to pay and we count on the property taxes, so we need to have a mechanism to ensure that we're getting the money on time. And certainly, I think it's great that we go above and beyond to, to give that extra letter before the end of the February month, before it goes to the county. But in this instance, I mean, it's clear that the board does not support waiving the fee, so I think.
Well, I guess my question is, why wouldn't we do it for all of them who mailed it in? Because it's the mail that was the problem.
Yeah, I see.
We had a lot of people, I mean, he gets a lot of calls.
Mailing yourself and asking the bank to mail it is two different things in my opinion.
But you know that it's not necessarily received, I mean, they warn you.
I mean, if, if the bank debited it for me on February 9th, I would assume that.
Well, you shouldn't, it says right there, it's not guaranteed.
I mean, I look, I don't think we need to belabor the point. I think it's obvious where, you know, everybody's stand, so, you know, sorry to the Anton's, but.
One, one point I'll add, Stephanie, is that when we budget each year, the budget we're going to approve in two weeks is our total property, expected property tax collections. We do not budget for penalties. So there is no expectation that we're going to get any, any additional money other than what we are legally prescribed to get under the property taxes. So again, this is not like I, you know, I've got a quota to meet or anything like that. I mean, like I said, I'd be more than happy if we had zero people that hadn't paid by February 14th, but.
Well, 1,200 is a sizable chunk of money that didn't come in by the expected date. But I will say that your, the direct debit from the website, I appreciate that it will say you have a payment coming up in two days. It'll actually warn me in case I think the check's not going to be good or the payment. But then it will say your taxes were paid and that makes me feel better because I'm one of these like worry, worry, mail it early when I, if I would mail it, you know, always do it ahead. So I do appreciate the system that you have to also let me know that you did get it.
And we're also, I mean, we're, we're constantly looking to improve the, the delivery of the, of the property taxes and make it easier for residents to pay and to pay on time. We're, you know, we're going to be looking at a new vendor potentially for collections. So, you know, because right now we have three different vendors, one for credit cards, one for ACHs. And so, but we're always looking to make it easier for people to pay, but, you know.
Is there a way we could include on the next tax bill, like a reminder to people saying, you know, if you want to definitely get it through your bank, do a wire transfer, ask them what their chart. But like, say basically if you send through online bill pay, remember there's a chance, so maybe do it three weeks early.
Yeah, I mean.
Because maybe, that's the thing, like, maybe people don't want to pay in December, they want to wait till February. Send it February 1st at the very latest, like, give that warning of it could take many weeks to come.
I was gonna say that and I figured it was gonna.
But it's hard though, because even with the mail, to the point, I mean, three weeks still might not be, you know, enough time. So I don't know what kind of disclaimer you could put, but I think.
Anything kind of warning.
I mean, we put the disclaimer that, and it says multiple times that postmarks are not accepted. So putting your, your tax check in the mailbox on February 14th doesn't count. We've got to receive it in hand by the 14th so we can process it and get ready for the people who are delinquent between the 14th and the 28th. And then get ready to hand it over to the county on, on March 1st. It's a very tight timeline.
To Danny's point, and I do, I have read the thing about the postmark, we all know that. But to say, you know, direct debit from our website is assured payment on that date, please be advised if you use your bank site bill pay that is a mail check and could be delayed.
Yeah, because some might not know it's mailed, that's what I'm saying.
I didn't know if you'd want to add all that, so I, I waited till Danny actually brought that up, but I, I agree with some, you know, you do have the postmark.
We're, again, we're also looking at ways to make the bill easier to read and understand. And I, I would be happy to put some language in there to that effect. You know, about, don't rely on the post office. And, you know, if you use an ACH transfer through our website, it's not a 3% fee. It's a very small fee for the ACH. It's only credit card that is a 3%. I think it's even less than that.
Okay.
Yeah, but, and, and the market is moving in a direction where ACHs are much less expensive. So that's why we're looking at a new vendor. But credit cards, that's a Visa, MasterCard thing, they're going to charge 2.75% or whatever they charge. You know, that's not, we don't keep that money. And so, and as a government, we, we can require that the payer pays that fee, which is how it works. If you go in to use G2G or something like that, you want to charge your taxes on your credit card or your Amex to get miles, then you gotta pay the 2.75%. Because that, again, we don't, that doesn't come to us, that's what Visa, MasterCard, American Express charge, so.
So unless there's any motions to be made, I would look to move on. Anyone? Next, we have the board minutes of February 12th. We've all had a chance to look them over. Look for a motion. So moved, which is my trustee Murray.
Support.
Support by trustee Kalinsky, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Next, we have to approve the bidirectional amplifier antenna BDA, cell phone signal enhancement system CPSCS on emergency operations center and Department of Public Works. We have Chief Leroy, you guys are like Cory, this is like a Cory Almes kind of writing.
Lot of acronyms.
Chief Leroy and we have Director, Director Will Babacik.
So we came, coming for you tonight for a new BDA antenna and cell phone signal enhancement. As, if any of you have been down in the EOC or in the basement where the conference rooms are in that building, it's very difficult to get any sort of signal. The BDA was a, we knew that we were going to have to do it when we submitted for this EOC grant and it was included in that grant. So when the testing was complete and the new radio system was activated, we were able to pinpoint that, yes, we were going to need the system. And then the cell phone signal enhancement has actually been, it was part of the original building and it failed several years ago. And this has been an upwards of a three-year process to put the system back in. Again, downstairs, when you're in the police training room or the EOC, there's very limited cell signal. And the Wi-Fi signal can be spotty at best in that room as well. So this is a, kind of a joint, part of it's part of the EOC grant that was submitted last year. And part of it was being planned for already. And since both systems interact with each other, we were submitting them as one system and one proposal. So the BDA system is, comes in at $22,901. Our 25% cost share would have been, is $5,725 as part of that grant that we accepted last year. And then the cell phone enhancement system comes in at $14,933. And both these systems will be installed at the same time using the same wiring. And actually, the cell phone system plugs into the BDA system as well. So the total cost of the project is $37,834. And then that would be, we would get reimbursed from the, from the grant for the BDA portion. Is there any questions?
I look for a motion.
So moved.
Which is my trustee Kalinsky, supported by trustee Murray, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass.
Thank you.
Next, we have 2024 presidential primary update by Clerk Brooke.
Good, good evening, everybody. Happy to report that we've completed the election process for the presidential primary, which was yesterday. There are a significant number of additional post-primary processes that occur. They are yet to occur, they'll be working with the county to, to accomplish those. But I do have, since here we are right away, I might as well give our little, you know, primer of some information about the primary right now. While it's all fresh in our minds. And so on a, on a side note about the mail, you know, my office and all the other clerks, because we do communicate directly quite a lot about things like the mail. It's just been really, really, really spotty. Ballots we'll send out all in the same day. When it's a large enough amount, we send bulk. You know, people, one person in the house who will get it and two others won't. And it's, they're mailed the same day. They'll mail them back, they say, the same day, and we'll get them at various times. It's, it's really quite unreliable. And a lot of folks are in Florida. I mean, we have that, you know, that, that too. And, and people will call and ask about the status of their mail, who knows when it's coming, who knows when it's coming back? We have no guarantee, but just like paying bills, there is a deadline, there's a sharp deadline, one second afterwards and the ballot does not count. So it's not a surprise to anybody about, you know, the fact that there's a deadline, whether it's your bill or your ballot. And we do on occasion, by, by the way, and we'll get people from Florida who will call and say, you know, my ballot hasn't shown up. And we'll say, well, we mailed it three weeks ago. And, and, and if they pay us, we will overnight them ballots and people, you know, people ask for that service. So, you know, people, you know, in the sense that folks are relying upon the mail for, for ballots. More and more of them become quite aware that it's, it's, it's a, it's a, you know, it's a user risk system kind of thing. And, but it is how it works. Now, by the way, I can tell you that most of our ballots that come back for those local folks are not, most ballots are coming back, period, through the absentee process are not by the mail. They are hand-delivered in one of our drop boxes or at the counter or at the safe in the lobby. Those are the primary methods of people return absentee ballots these days and have been for the last several years. So Sean, if you'd move on, we'll do the next slide, please. So, you know, every election, it's a people-powered process. Local folks in our community get involved and do this. And it doesn't, no election anywhere happens without the engagement of their citizens. So it's not a faceless activity, it is your neighbors, it is your friends, it's your family members, it's your parents, grandparents and so forth. It is really a wonderful collaborative process and so it's, it's pretty exciting to talk about. I do want to give a special shout out to, you know, some internal departments at the risk of missing any, but all of them help at the township to make sure elections happen. But the IT department, you know, was a big player that helped us with this process because we do use a lot of electronic equipment. Maintenance does a lot of help to set, set up and, and ensure that things are properly restored to working order the next day. Senior Center is, is now one of the central points that we're, you know, working on election activity. And they're great partners. Lastly is the Township Library. They're not part of Bloomfield Township Government itself, but they are also a really important partner and, and do a lot to help elections. These pictures are, my glasses back on.
I like your studious.
These pictures are, you know, are bottom right, you know, folks in my office processing absentee ballots or applications as they've come in. You can see the, the security cages behind them where all the ballots are maintained. They're kept locked at all times when we are not here in the office. So, you know, getting in here to the clerks area, I mean, they're secure already, but they're now even more secure because they're also locked within our, within our locked and secured facility with the police department in it. So the top center there was the, the early voting precinct workers. They are township employees in this instance, not employees, but township staff that do this, township election workers. And they were there Friday and Saturday, several of them were there all week. The early voting site is a, is technically a county site, but it's staffed and managed by the local clerks. And so it's a, it's a great service and again, the library, you know, is our host and they're a great host. Left picture there is Dave Crouch, our equipment, elections equipment coordinator. And you can see Val and Neil there who are on the election commission with me. We're doing the, what's called a public accuracy test, checking, ensure that the, the equipment is, is, is operating as, as it's required. So Val there is putting through the stack of ballots, which we then ask the machine to generate results and we compare that against the predetermined results because it's a, it's a test deck that's used. And only if the machine passes do, you know, do we proceed. Prior to this, we do logic and accuracy test on all of the machines. We have, in the last year, done hashtag testing, hashtag testing on the machines, which is an IT process where we compare the, the software on the machine, to ensure that's the original software as programmed by the vendor and hasn't been modified by anybody. And there, yeah, Val, Val's one of our new members of the election commission. I think she says it's great work.
I, I'm really enjoying it. I, I didn't know, you know, exactly what all was involved and, but I'm always happy to learn. And yeah, it was interesting to see that that stack of ballots will be, one is from a wrong precinct, so it bounces it. If it's stray marks, if it's got too many, you know, votes marked, it, it bounces it back out. And Dave explained to me exactly why that happens and then what you do next and if you continue. And then we actually took the tally tape that it spits out at the end and had to compare it to what they know they actually gave me in that stack. And both Neil and I had to verify and sign that we tested it. And no, it's a great experience and I like learning more about the elections and working with you on it.
Great to have you on the, on the commission. One, one last shout out is the fire department. Dave Crouch is a retired fire department Bloomfield Township Lieutenant. For many years, decades, the, the election coordinators have come from those, the ranks of retired firefighters. So it's also a really wonderful collaborative relationship we have with the fire department. And yesterday was also an interesting time in the township. We had two national media outfits in the township for the day. NBC News was here recording throughout the day. And Fox News Business was here doing live segments all day long at the township. And interviewing voters, you can see, is there outside and interviewing and staying sort of, you know, they're here, they're at the precinct on the top right, the cable precinct. They're sort of in the side garage area that, with the, with the precinct in the background. And every, oh, it might have been six times or five times during the day, Fox News would go to the Michigan reporter who was here on site and he would broadcast live, you know, right from there. It was pretty cool. You know, both media outfits talked about how, you know, the nation was looking at Michigan and, and they thought Bloomfield in particular would be an important place to be to, to understand the, you know, what, you know, the sense of Michigan voters. So we were happy to host them yesterday. Moving on to our next slide, we've got the turnout a little lower than the last two years. But in line with, when I say last two years, the last two presidential primaries, but in line with the 2012 presidential primary. So are we down or are we just sort of back to the historical norm? I don't know, but, you know, it was a little down from the last couple of years. And we could sense it in my office. Now, by the way, the election infrastructure and staffing is prepared for whatever might come. It's the same price essentially, whether we get 1,000 ballots or, or 10,000 ballots, you know. We've got to be prepared to handle whatever influx happens and handle it within the timelines required.
I'm curious, Martin, because I know they'll say, you know, if it's really cold or if it's rainy, that will affect turnout. I know we do more absentee than ever, but yesterday it was record 72 degrees. Do you think that helped or decreased your turnout? What's the feeling?
You know, I have no idea. I just can say that each precinct throughout the township was slow. There wasn't pockets that were higher or lower. It was just, you know, fairly low, fairly low overall number. Of that number, a lot of them are absentee ballot voters versus precinct voters. So precinct day was pretty, was just generally pretty quiet.
Well, it's the first time we've had early voting too. Do you have any numbers on how many people voted early?
So we had just over 500 people vote early. Let's quickly go to the next slide and we'll get to that detail, that's a great question.
Thank you.
So the library, Bloomfield Township Library put, put a millage renewal on the ballot. It passed, you can see the results there for the millage. As far as results go, that's, that's the extent of what I've got to talk about this evening. Next slide, I want to briefly note a couple of items. Early voting, the third line down, Val has talked about that. You know, that, that starts on the second Saturday prior to election day, runs through the Sunday prior to election day. 8:30 to 4:30 every day except for Thursdays is noon to 8:00. Those are the constitutional minimum number of days that it's open and the minimum number of hours. And we're participating in a countywide plan to, one, share the administrative burden, share the costs and have a consistent early voting schedule throughout the town, the county as best as possible. A couple of municipalities don't participate in it, but generally, almost everybody does. So we're all having the same days that we're open, we're all open the same hours so that there isn't any confusion about what Royal Oak is doing or Bloomfield Township or West Bloomfield is the same. We had a lot more this time than we had in November for early voting, but, you know, my sense is it'll certainly be building over time and hope to see a lot more. The primary date moved up this year, so that was a change for everybody. It's, it caught our school partners off guard. You know, even though they knew about it in the legislature, we had talked about it in the legislature, they have calendars that are set through negotiations and very difficult to move those things. So a lot of our school partners were in session. They don't like to be in session when, when the community is coming in and voting for, because their, their primary charge is the safety of their students. I understand it, there was security in, at many of the high schools, I'm sorry, not high schools, but the schools. That was offered and, and everything went well. There were no incidences or threats or problems on election day here in the township as usual. The August election is the next election, it's August 6th, Tuesday, August 6th. The next election after that is Tuesday, November 5th. Both those days, schools are closed, so it will be a little easier to, to manage that, you know, that, that day. You know, our busiest time is 7:00 to 8 o'clock or 7:00 to 9 o'clock. It's also the busiest time in many of the schools where the buses and the parents are all showing up. The permanent mail ballot list, you know, was built, that started last, we started building that last year. That's the apply once for an absentee ballot, receive one always. Well, that promise was a little premature by the constitutional drafters because Michigan is also called a closed primary state by stat, by statute. So for the presidential primary, they, individuals had to select which ballot, which meant I couldn't mail them a ballot. It wasn't necessarily really a choose once and always receive a ballot process. So that unfortunately did confuse a bunch of people. It's just a fact of the law and we tried to do what we could to communicate that. But August and November will be a lot easier because there's, there is only one ballot. August is an open primary. As you know, there'll be two, two, you know, columns on that ballot. And you just choose which column you want to vote in, you can't vote on both, but you can vote on one or the other. column you want to vote, and you can't vote on both, but you can vote on one or the other. The presidential primary was three separate ballots, and we had, people had to tell us which one was, they were going to get. If anything upset people more on Election Day that caused some consternation was being asked either to fill out a form for an absentee ballot or in a precinct to tell us which ballot they wanted. You know, and even our election workers had forgotten that that's the way presidential primaries have been in Michigan. This isn't new, but, you know, some folks simply just didn't, did not want to make a declaration. As we explained, it's not, you don't have to be a member of that party. You don't, you simply just have to tell us what you, what you want. Now, the next thing they ask is whether it's private. It's not private. It's, it goes into the qualified voter file. It is a state database. Some of FOIA is that information. It's available for, as long as it exists. So this election will be, as every election is, cleaned from the system and a new election built for the next election. So every national database people, each party is already, I'm certain, sent a FOIA to the state of Michigan to say, well, which ballot did Martin ask for and which ballot did so-and-so ask for? And so that is, it is the way the state legislature built it. They could change it, by the way. They could make it an open primary. I hope they do. Certainly, that's something I'll ask for next time I'm in Lansing and testifying in the elections committees. I want to highlight one last item on there, which is the absentee voting in precincts, which is, I think, the most interesting and exciting part of the change. Previously, if you had an absentee ballot, the only way to have that counted would be to return it to the clerk's office, which we would then count on the absentee voting counting board, which is a group of citizens and, you know, who come in, just like the precinct, and process all of them and count them under the guidance of my office. Now, individuals can receive an absentee ballot in the mail or pick one up in my office or any other clerk's office where they reside, spend time studying it, reviewing it, fill it out at home, and then vote it themselves through the tabulator, either during early voting or in the precinct. And to me, that's like the best of both worlds. You know, in August, when the ballot is super long, you can get it beforehand, you can fill it out beforehand, you can come in and tabulate it directly. Previously, as I said, if you had to return it to me or if you went to a precinct, which you could do, you had to spoil the ballot you had, turn it in, you couldn't use it as a template, turn it in to us before we'd issue a new ballot. So we saw some of that being utilized this year, and I anticipate that'll grow as the year goes on, especially as we move into the more complex elections. I have to take my glasses off so I can read. So one last item that's not on there I want to mention, which is, we, also on my website, we have information for candidates. So we have information for voters, information for other workers, but also for candidates. There is an election this year for, you know, local and statewide candidates, for local candidates, just for the Bloomfield Township, that they file in my office. The filing deadline is April 23rd at 4:00. Show up at 4:01 or mail it and I receive it tomorrow. It's not going to count. It will not be timely. April 23rd, 4:00 is the filing deadline for someone filing for a local office, such as the Board of Trustees here. The library board is another example. If you want more details about that, because there are additional details, as with everything, it's more complex than it's just what I just mentioned, my website has some additional information there. There's a lot of great additional information at the county, which includes also the campaign finance requirements that exist for any candidate that files for office. So, yeah, we, me and my staff enjoy doing this, and we're already, you know, already met and started preparing for the August election. So thanks for the opportunity to talk a little bit about it. I could go on all night and do really enjoy it. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you for being here, because I know you guys had a really late night, and they were here all day and now. So thank you to Sean, too. Thank you, we appreciate you.
Thank you. Thanks a lot.
So next, we have considered approval of the Brother Rice High School's application for a public auction license, again with Clark Brook.
So this is an annual item we receive from Brother Rice annually. And their event is coming up in March. They have, they're professionals that's filling out the proper materials. They have done so again. Megan Medrosian is the contact person over there. All of the items required are in the packet. So if anyone has any questions, come up, you know, or...
Any questions? I'll look for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kalinsky.
Support.
Support by trustee Ficki, all in favor.
Aye.
All votes. That passes. Next, we have approved the budget amendment number six, election wages, for presentation by Clark Brook.
This amendment is required because many of those items I just talked about in the report required much more additional printing, publishing, and we amended the budget for those items, but also required additional staff. There were new deadlines, new processes, and new timelines that were in place. And all of those things were unanticipated because they didn't exist at the time this budget was prepared, initially back in this time last year. And working with Jason, we have identified this as an area that will likely need some adjustment. You know, it's close, but we always have to be on the right side of this line, and that's why we're asking for an amendment. I'm asking for an amendment based on his calculations of $40,000. I want to note, too, that this work is for two refundable expenses. So we did the school district election, which was charged in total back to the school district, and we did just the presidential primary election. That is paid by the state. We will prepare a bill and send it to them. Purchased types of expenses are not booked as, or expenditures aren't booked as expenses, they're booked as receivables because we will get reimbursed for that. Wages can't be booked as a receivable, even though we will be reimbursed for all of this money that we spent staffing the presidential primary and have already been reimbursed for the staffing by the school district. It doesn't come back into the same budget. It comes back into the general fund as a revenue. The budget side has to, though, be adjusted to reflect the spend, and in fact, authorized us to spend. So I'm requesting the amendment of $40,000 to accommodate for that. And as I mentioned, it's technically awash. We won't, it will be reimbursed to us when the state ultimately provides us the check.
Anyone have any questions? No? I'll look for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kalinsky.
Support.
Support by trustee Ficki, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. And next, we have considered the resolution to consolidate sub-accounts in the Retiree Employee Healthcare Benefit Trust.
Thank you. This is a, another topic that we discussed at the investment study session. I talked at that time about, a little bit about the trust's history. So we, the board formed the trust in 2005, and at that time, there was one account, and that is where the funds in the account would go, and that's how they would get invested. 10 years later, in 2015, the board modified the trust's legal documents to allow for separate sub-accounts by department. I should note that all of these sub-accounts are invested identically. So they're all the same assets, the same allocation of those assets. It's just the amount of, the percentages, they're all the same, but obviously, there's more dollars in public safety versus cable, for example. So it started with a water and sewer sub-account, and then we added, not we, but the board added a cable building and public safety. So there's a total of five sub-accounts, the general, water and sewer, cable building, and public safety. I always questioned this as a trustee, and I wanted to study it more closely when I came into this position. For example, our pension trust only has one account. There's one account, everything's invested in that one account. And yet, we have the same makeup of departments that would apply to the same pension trust. So I asked our advisors, our financial advisor, our lawyer, our auditor, do they work with any other municipality or township that uses sub-accounts in a trust like this? And the answer was no. So with Dirk, I reviewed all of the relevant statutes. We discussed the legal implications, and we are convinced, I think I can speak for him, I know he's not here, but I'm sure Mark could chime in, but that it is entirely unnecessary to have separate investment sub-accounts. We can keep track of the liability. So, you know, one thing that the resolution says is, we have a liability to employees. We promised them retirement healthcare. We have that liability, we have to pay for it. Whether we fund it or not, how we fund it, doesn't matter. We have that liability as a township. And so we can keep track of what percentage of the trust can be allocated to which department. We could do that to the side. It doesn't need to be, again, invested in five separate ways. And, you know, so you might ask, why not just leave it the way it is? Well, we have efficiencies that we can gain by moving to one single account. We'll have economies of scale by having a bigger pool of assets that we can diversify a little bit better, number one. Number two, to get into lower-cost mutual funds, you have to have a higher dollar investment. So when we have like the cable fund that's only got 600,000, and we want to allocate that with 10% of big, a large cap and 10%, it makes the amounts that we're investing really small, and we end up having to use consumer shares and not institutional shares or the lower-cost shares. And so it saves us time, obviously, on the accounting. It saves time for me and for the investment professionals I work with to have to do it five times for the, any time we make a change. So there's dollar efficiencies that we can get, there's time efficiencies that can be gained, and there's really no benefit to do it because we can keep track of the percentage of the assets from each department separately. The actuary will do that. They will keep track of the liability so we know what percentage of the liability is water and sewer, what percentage of the liability is public safety. We know that. The actuary has to provide that. And then we can keep track of what percentage of assets can be used for those, for that liability. So ultimately, I think there's a lot to be gained here. I'd be happy to take any questions if anybody has any. And then my request would be for the board to approve the resolution that I provided in the packet.
So by doing this, it would be the same as the way that the pension accounts are now, which is just one?
Correct.
Okay.
And I wasn't familiar with this at all as a layman who doesn't do a lot of the investing like you all do, sitting on that committee, having the newest member come in and say she couldn't believe we were doing this because all the others that she works with don't do this. That came across. That's why I do wish that we do have one member of the community that does get confused a lot, and I wish she would stay and listen because it makes sense when you listen to people of why you would do it. Saves time, money, and it's the standard across the board. And you are able to still pull out exactly how much every, you're still tracking everything.
Yeah, well, I mean, the way we do it is, the way they do it in the pension is that Jason figures out what percentage of the liability belongs to which department, and then that percentage is applied to the overall ADC that has to be applied, and each one of those slivers goes into the respective department. So the clerk's department has a percentage, it's called DB, you know, I forget what account number it is, but it says, you know, DB Retirement, Charges to the Accountant, Supervisor, Treasurer. We all have in our departments a line for DB retirement costs, and all that is, is the percentage of the overall liability that is associated with that department multiplied by the ADC. The ADC, we have to pay for the pension, which we don't have to do for RHC. But again, the same thing would apply. We would just figure out the funding level for each department and pull the money and keep track of it that way, the budget, the same way we already do it. So the mechanics of what Jason does in accounting would not change. This is purely about the mechanics of the investments.
Well, it sounds like it makes sense that it's going to save time. It's going to allow those larger chunks for investments because I know that that's a factor. You know, if you have this much, the fee is this much, and if you have more money, you save. So it seems like it's going to save money on two levels and maybe make things a little less complicated and staff-wise. So, yeah, I am in favor, and I'm prepared to make a motion if everybody else is ready. Is there any discussion?
One second. Specifically on this, we have, people in the community always talk about transparency, right? So this doesn't change our transparency because we still have the actuaries doing the accounting that shows the current funding balance per department. So when we did, or when previous boards had broken this out, it appeared transparent to show the funding levels per. But we can still do that. All this does is provide us a better mechanism to spend less money to residents, to make it more efficient, which is the point of this, right? Like, let's be good stewards with the money we have, let's find ways to save, and hopefully create better returns for them. So this is just taking the pencil and sharpening a little better. So I'm glad you brought this up. Again, and like Supervisor Walsh had said, our newest member on the Financial Sustainability Committee brought up that she works with a lot of smaller organizations and a lot of smaller communities that don't have big chunks of money. So they can't do this, even if they want to be, and bring in the sub-accounts because they will not be able to invest that money at a good level. So we were doing it, now we can just do a little better. So, and even our, Brian Green, right? He even mentioned that, again, 20 or 30 communities that he represents, none of them do that. So again, if we're supposed to be, we hired these people to give us the best standards and know what other communities are doing, we weren't being the best. This is a better way to do it. So.
And one last thing, I just want to mention on a transparency angle, too. I mean, trustee or treasurer Shostak, because, you know, I want to commend him. He brought this, this is not the first time we're seeing this. I mean, we had a study session on this, we've all had a chance to talk about it. I've had all of my questions answered through that process. And so, you know, I do appreciate all of that openness about the change and the reasons for it, and it makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Well, one other thing I would add, I'm sorry.
Someday, we're going to get to this motion.
No, 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 no. Real fast, real fast. And I want to make sure it's in the motion, yeah. This will only take effect in the new fiscal year. So I'm not going to consolidate anything until April 1st, and it says it in the motion, so.
Does anyone else have anything to add? If not, your motion?
Well, and I appreciate everybody what they chimed in. So, you know, it's valuable that we talk about it. So I would like to make the motion that we consolidate the sub-accounts in the Retiree Employees Healthcare Benefits Trust as presented.
Motion by trustee Murray.
Support.
Support by trustee Kalinsky, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. Next, we have approval of payroll and vouchers for February 28th, unless there's any changes. I'll look for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kalinsky.
Support.
Support by trustee Murray, all in favor.
Aye.
And next, we have our last motion. Motion by Clark Brook.
Support.
Support by trustee Ficki, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we'll see you in about 10 days.